This is for a regular council meeting. I remind everyone that, once again, the meeting is being recorded audio visually. Item one, we have an apology from Alderman here. Item two, confirmation of minutes of the 16th of November, as circulated, be taken red and confirmed. Alderman Bambero, thank you, seconded. Alderman McFarlane. Motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item three, there's nothing to report. Item four is that council notes the workshops conducted, the workshop conducted on 23rd of November, and the briefing on the 4th of December. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Alderman Thirley, thank you. Motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five is declarations of interest of Alderman or class associate, and I'd like to declare item 11.3.3. Alderman Chong.
11.7.1, please, Matt.
Item, no, complex item seven is public question time. Item 7.1, there's a rezoning request from Mr Russell Hill. General Manager, could you...
Yes, can I ask, Mr Hill indicate he is in the audience? Good, thank you, Mr Hill. We've had a number of questions submitted, I think the questions are printed in the agenda, but printed of the gallery, I will give a quick summation of the answers. Question is, first question, I think is, since 2005, how many rezoning requests have been before council consideration? And then a range of questions that the question should cover. In response, I would say without detailed analysis of each application, it's not possible to generate a report that will provide a breakdown of rezoning applications in the format requested. However, the breakdown information is presented in the description, details shown in the full list of all rezoning applications considered for the period as provided below. Since 2005, council has received 171 applications for various types of planning scheme amendments. Of these 110 related to private applicant-driven requests, and the remaining 61 were of council's own motion. A total of 46 applications, 29 being private applicant-driven requests, were either withdrawn or unable to be determined due to the approval of the Clarence Planning Scheme on the 2007, on the 1st of April 2008, or the declaration of the Clarence Peter Planings Scheme 2015, on the 1st of July. Of the 110 applicant-driven amendments, two are currently being assessed, 79 were initiated and progressed to public exhibition. Ultimately, 57 of these were approved by either the Planning Commission or the former Resource Planning and Development Commission, as it was called prior to 2009. 22 were refused, but the further 29 were drawn. Under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act, there is no mechanism available to appeal the decision of the CPC on planning grounds, although that does apply on legal grounds. I also have, Mr Mayor, which will be included in the minutes, a listing of all of the matters that, as requested by Mr Hill. A full written response in respect of Mr Hill's questions will be forwarded to him after the meeting, and the responses to the questions will be recorded in the agenda.
Thank you very much, General Manager. There are no items at 7.3, so item 7.4, public questions without notice. Being none. Item eight, deputations by members of the public, General Manager.
Yes, Mr Mayor, we have three deputations this evening. The first one is Mr Andrew Fraser, who wishes to address council in relation to the Clarence Street public consultation. Mr Fraser is here, if he could hand the call? He's not. Is Mr Thirlin here? No. I'll move to the second speaker, which is Mr Peter Kent of Howra, who wishes to address council also in respect of the Clarence Street safety assessment project.
I do need to remind speakers that under meeting rigs, we can only offer three minutes, and there'll be an alert at two and a half minutes.
Can I do that after I've handed?
Sure.
Where's the clock start?
Well, if you could hand it to Mr Andrew Fraser.
Thank you very much.
And when you're ready, we'll start the clock.
Okay, I'm ready. Thank you. My name's Peter Kent, and I'm here to talk about the Clarence Street Safety Day. I'm primarily concerned that bike transport along that street has been on our agenda for over 10 years to get safe bicycle lanes. And we're now at the point where we've done a lot of work on getting them in place, but council, I'm concerned that council still doesn't seem to realise the enormous benefits to motorists of getting cyclists out of their way on that street. You've been distributed a map that's come from an application called Strava, and the coloured lines, or the intensity of the coloured lines on it, shows you how strongly Clarence Street is used by cyclists. This map shows only cyclists using roads and trails in the Clarence municipality. So it's well known that it's a very important route for cyclists. And I think the thing that really struck me about the agenda item where you're considering this tonight is that I think after spending three quarters of a million dollars on road safety issues on Clarence Street, which is what's under consideration, and have cars still having to doff cyclists down the edge of the road is unacceptable in today's terms. At the moment, you still have cyclists meandering across the road, getting out of the way of parked cars and other obstacles in the road, and a bank of cars behind them, travelling slowly, waiting for a safe opportunity to pass. And because there are no defined lanes across the road where people need to be, motorists are pretty uncertain about where they need to pass. And the ones that do run the gauntlet of passing a cyclist between the traffic furniture are pretty frustrated and angry. And having bike lanes on Clarence Street will reduce that impact between cyclists and motorists and make travel for motorists a lot easier and safer. I'm also concerned that option one, not to have a traffic violation, provides even less room for cyclists and motorists to interact, they're going to be in an even tighter confined space on the road. And I think that's pretty unacceptable in today's terms. And motorists should feel pretty rigged off after spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for that key issue to solve for a very small amount of money. I think it's about 10% of the project budget to get them out of the way. I would like to acknowledge that there will be parking issues that will arise from this project and restricting cars to one side of the way can kind of be an inconvenience for some people. But I think people will work out different ways of getting around that. It's currently illegal to park in somebody's property. But if parking's restricted, people will invite their visitors to park in their driveway and find other solutions to doing it. So I think there are ways around that. There's also three schools on Clarence Street with kids using bike transport to get to school. There's more kids riding down Trinity Road on bikes this year now. And we need a safer environment, that's where I live, and we need a safer environment for them to be in. Also, the cars that do park, the proposal to have bike lanes will provide a buffer for them so they don't get hit by passing cars.
Thanks very much, Mr Kent, thank you. Our next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Mr Greg Casamati, who wishes to address council in relation to a development action of 51 acres on the road. That's on tonight's agenda.
Good evening, my name's Greg Casamati, and apparently to some, this is what a big bad developer looks like. But anyway, in, before you tonight is the DA, on my land adjacent to Hobart Airport. This land's been in my family for nearly 100 years. It's been farmed by myself, my great-grandfather, my grandfather, my father, and now my son's after me. And I look forward to developing the land in the future because it's obviously critical to the success of Hobart Airport and to Clarence and Hobart in general. In fact, in 2003, the state government, and in getting 2008 in their industrial developments studies, recognised its importance. And I'm actually here to thank council, can you believe it? Because Clarence also recognised its importance and assisted me, in fact rezoned the land for me. And I personally want to thank all of those involved in doing so. It's a milestone in the Casamati family to work in a collaborative approach with the city of Clarence, but hopefully it will continue well into the future. After some initial teething problems in the first DA that we've put in, which is to provide landfill there, and also, you'll notice in the DA that I'm environmentally aware, and I've provided a 20 hectare environmental offset in conjunction with Hobart Airport for development in the future for both of us. So it's obvious in this day and age, you have to be aware and environmentally sensitive, and we've taken that approach. I certainly believe that we have. It's difficult to develop, has been difficult to develop for the last eons. And I sincerely hope that the way I do things now, which is I come into council when I have an idea, and I ask council if they believe the idea has merit before I proceed to a DA stage. And I think that's a very important way to work forward together because, quite simply, I think that council should be looking, given that consideration, council should be looking at reasons why a development should happen instead of why it shouldn't. And it's, the last thing I'd like to say is that whilst a lot of the staff have been down to my land to see what my visions and my plans are for the future, I invite any of the councillors at any time to do the same so that this is the first DA of what could be hundreds. There's another 100 hectares of development down there of industrial land. And I'd like to, as that invites you all down, to share my vision for the future. And I'm a very proud Clarence City Council, a Clarence resident, and I look forward to being there in the future.
Thank you. Unless Mr Fraser are on, there are no further speakers, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Item nine is motions on notice, 9.1, Alderman McFarlane. Do we have a second? I'm sorry, Alderman McFarlane, the motion lapses. Item 10, item 10.1 is reports from single and joint authorities. And the motion there is, let's see, quarterly, September, quarterly report is pending. There was a board meeting today for the Suntaz Main and Council's authority, but the minutes obviously aren't out yet, but I'll circulate those as soon as they are. I would like to table the quarterly report, which obviously will be included in the agenda for the next meeting. Copying refuse disposal site joint authority, Alderman Campbell.
In your meeting, which was up on Thursday, that report will be circulated.
Southern Waste Strategy Authority, Alderman James.
There's two matters that I would like to draw my colleagues' attention to this evening. First of all, it has been circulated, a copy of the Southern Waste Strategy Authority's annual report. So I would like to move that to be received, so we can tick that off the list to start with, Mr Mayor.
We have a second, please. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Any discussion? I'll put the motion and all those in favour? Carried, against, carried.
Second matter, thank you, Mr Mayor, the second matter is with regard to the annual general meeting that was held on the 3rd of December 2015. And at that meeting, and I have copies of the minutes of the last AGM, but what transpired at the meeting on Thursday is that we had an election again for office bearers. And councillor Alex Green was re-elected as chairperson, and myself as deputy chairperson. And can I say that we're going to see this out to the end of the financial year? And there was a great sense of camaraderie at this meeting. And I've said it to you, Mr Mayor, and others over the time. In my 20 odd years of local government experience, I have never, never seen a way in which the managerial wing of Slauser and its elected reps work so closely together. It's just outstanding to think that you have the experts on one hand, and you have the elected reps on the other. And by gathering all that knowledge and experience together, it really does make a great working committee. And I would just like to make those comments. Having said that, would like to table the minutes of the last AGM and the agenda for the 30th of December 2015.
Taz Water Corporation, we have the quarterly report to the end of 30th of September, be received. You've got to have a second, Alderman Chong. Seconded, Alderman Cusick, Alderman Chong.
I do have a couple of questions, if that's possible, Mr Mayor. And I guess the first one is a comment rather than a question. In the CEO's update, I was intrigued to read that the safety performance continues to trend downwards, which suggests to me that actually there are more problems than there are less problems. Although reading further in the report, that's obviously not quite the case. Yes, the safety incidents are trending downwards, I think. Three questions, in talking about customer complaints which are above their statutory level, required level, I just want if it's possible to get an update on Lauderdale because obviously that's been in the news a lot recently, and I would presume some of those complaints relate to Lauderdale and the specifics of the contract here. My other question relates to the fair work appeal, which I understand was rejected, and whether that's going to make a significant impact on the expenditure and therefore on the bottom line of Taz Water. And my last one, it talks about the percentage of compliant affluent is 45%, which seems very low to me. And what does that mean in terms of discharge, which is presumably into the dirt?
Thank you, Alderman Chong. I guess as council's rep, I should answer some of those questions if I can.
Hopefully, if not tonight.
The Lauderdale incident certainly has been hot on the press and certainly on the ABC radio. And at this stage, as of this afternoon, the CEO has confirmed the following to me. One, a customer's entering the scheme signed a connection agreement in which they could choose to pay upfront or execute a credit contract. Secondly, the credit contract is a loan like any other commitment to repay an amount over a period. Clause 9D of the credit contracts actually stated that, quote, "You acknowledge that under the charge, we're entitled to logic caveat over the secured property," unquote. Caveats cover only the amount owed to Taz Water and reduces the customers' pay the loan down. So I think that was an important clarification. There was, particularly in the media, a suggestion that any caveat would preclude anything else. Some customers' loan balances did fall in arrears as a result of an issue with direct debit arrangements. Letters of demand were not sent, although we did contact three customers in 2014 to follow-up payments. And we wrote to customers in July 2015 to confirm that we were proceeding with the lodgment of caveats. For those customers with an arrears balance, we included notification of the amount and offered to work with them to address any back payments with three options, basically extending a loan, smoothing out the arrears, or paying out the amount in full. The caveats have actually been executed by batch, the first lot were 50. And with the second batch, they're taking the opportunity to phone every single 68 customers to confirm that they're proceeding, offering them the option of paying out the loan and also explaining the caveat. No customers have chosen to opt out and paid in advance. They did, the CEO did observe that no doubt there are a few things they could have done better. For example, reduced the duration between the credit contract and placing the caveats. However, they are endeavouring with best endeavours to ensure that their way of dealing with this matter in the future is all user-friendly. In regard to the fair work decision, the three regional agreements are in place. The single statewide agreement obviously was tossed out by the fair work. The employees on each of the three regional agreements in the last few months, the southern and the north west regions, have actually signed up. In the north, they haven't yet, the north is primarily, and that issue is primarily related to job security rather than the size of any wage increase. So in that sense, there's not a significant wage impact. In regard to the affluent, there is no doubt that a number of, large number of sewage treatment plants are not compliant with their licence. The poor performance has been inherited by Taz Water, and they're working pretty hard on it and hoping that while they're attacking through capital upgrades and improvements, the worst performing plants first so that they can get the maximum improvement as quickly as possible. Clearly, there's a huge capital expense involved with a limited budget, so it's going to take some time. Does that answer all your questions? Are there any other, any other discussion in terms of the Taz Water quarterly report? In that case, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Are there any reports from council and special committees or other representative bodies? Alderman McFarlane.
I'd like to table the Buckingham South Annual General Meeting agenda and the ordinary meeting.
Alderman Cusick.
I'd like to present the Widdasarn Community actually sent a meeting for November.
Alderman James.
I will table the minutes of the Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee of the 8th of October 2015. And having said that, I would like to provide a very brief report regarding the discussion we had last Monday with the Commissioner of Police, Mr Paul, the Mayor and myself. In a nutshell, the Commissioner has decided to have a, on receipt of information from council or from the General Manager. Will come back to us with a response. And I think that's really all I can say at this stage.
Yeah, we're waiting for a response, and I haven't received it yet.
Waiting for a response, and can I say that I thought the Commissioner, listen, we do our comments, and also too, I know that the General Manager has provided to the Commissioner of Police a number of matters that were discussed and passed by council regarding the road, or the roping to Lauderdale Forshaw Trail. So we've decided, rather than go directly to the minister, his response to us was, of course, for security purposes and so on, that the track on the western boundary of the Police Academy, it was, there were concerns that the police have in relation to that public access, particularly when they're doing manoeuvres and other operations. So rather than go have a meeting directly with the minister, I thought it'd be best to have a meeting with the Commissioner of Police because once we get over, just done that side, but I think that the minister would say, well, look, you've had discussions with the Commissioner, and therefore he can take it to the next step. So we wait the response from the Commissioner of Police, and I'm hoping that there will be some fruitful response in relation to this.
Alderman James.
I'll table the minutes.
Any other reports?
Can I ask you a question through you, a question?
Sure, yeah.
Alderman James. Just then, you spoke about how you had spoken to the Commissioner and advised the correspondence from the minister. Where's the, is there some, where do you assume that the minister got the directives and advice to make the changes that he recommended in the first place?
Mr Mayor, I think it's come directly from the Commissioner of Police or his representative at the time. Because it wasn't always taken as a fait accompli, this matter. And so I think the minister was acting on the advice of his senior representative in the police, and that's the Commissioner of Police.
All right, any other reports? Thank you. Moving on to item 11, reports of officers. 11.1, that the info in the weekly briefing reports of the 16th, 23rd and 30th of November be noted. Alderman Campbell, second Alderman Thirley. Speakers, questions, Alderman James.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, I draw council's attention to the weekly briefing report of the 16th of November 2015, and that is the delays in collection of annual hard waste. And the weekly briefing report of the 30th of November, again, delays in collection of annual hard waste. Mr Mayor, look, we know what's happened this year, the tonnages increased by 50%. There's been another crack, a work through put on just to try to meet the capacity or the amount of tonnage that's been put out. So look, my question is that there are some problems still with regard to rubbish being put out on a certain day as per council's advice. And the cause of the delays, this rubbish has been there for at least eight or nine days, sometimes up to 10 days. Is there any way in which, and I'll question through you, the General Manager or to Mr Graham, is there any way in which we can correspond with the ratepayers or residents to advise them that they are going to be dealt well? That they shouldn't necessarily put the rubbish out until there is some communication to that suburb in which they live, that there is going to be a collection in five days hence. Because at the moment, there are, there are problems, but it's something we don't want to decide to nudge or support. I just seek some guidance, Mr Mayor.
Well, if I could preempt that by saying that I expect the staff, well, we've all noticed the problems, and there will be a report prepared and presented to a workshop so that we can look at what options there might be to make sure it pans better in the future. Mr Graham, do you have any?
I just can add that through you, Mr Mayor, the Saturday afternoon, the rubbish hard waste question has been completed. System spot checks in very careful.
General Manager. I'm through, Mr Mayor, look, it is clear that we grossly underestimated the resources required to undertake the task, but it has, the tonnages collected have increased dramatically year on year. And I think probably before we, I guess we would like to come back to a council workshop, but before we do, we'd like to undertake a review and come back to council with an analysis of actually what's happened and some thoughts on how we might manage this a little bit better going forward from here on in. I think the average delay was around five days on average, while the time people had their rubbish collected. But if we put out an invite on a particular day, we really need to be within 24 hours of that. So we need to do it better, but we need to review how we're going to do that. And we'll provide advice to council in due course.
Thank you. Any other questions on the weekly briefing reports? Put the motion in, the information in the be noted, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. I now advise council intention to the planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act and go to item 11.3.1, supervision application in fact, a boundary adjustment at Six Road Place, Acton Park and 51 Cranston Road, Cambridge. Move, Alderman Campbell? Have a second, please. Alderman Walker, thank you. Mr Speaker?
As the officer.
Okay. Alderman James?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. There had been a couple of representations in relation to this and I think what has occurred is, and I think the base, basis of this coming to council is for retrospective approval in, in that sense. Because there has been a number of activities in that area as part and parcel of the dumping of, of concrete and other material on the site. And it's basically at the gateway to the city. Now, I've been assured, and I spoke to Mr Lovell earlier this evening, and, and by looking at the number of conditions on this, together with the, the boundary adjustment and the crushing facility that's going to be operating on site, that I am confident that these conditions will be met. But like anything that has happened or has been given approval in this place over the years, we have to rely on, and also the public, to draw council's attention to issues that may or may not be done in accordance with the original development application. Now, we have a compliance officer, but he has a, well, a task ahead of him to operate across the city and it's very difficult for him to be out about and basically observe whether ADA has been approved or the conditions within that application are being, being met. So look, I will support this, but I would like to get assurances, Mr Mayor, that these conditions, and they run up to 24, and our senior health surveyor, no, senior health, the environmental officer, I'm still working on the old system, has a prominent role to play here with regard to noise and also to the, the type of material that needs to be dampened and make sure there's no dust problems, et cetera. And also too, there is those other conditions that are basically under the statutory provisions of council's policies, of education and foreign habitat assessment and so forth. And I would like to be assured that these conditions are met. And if they aren't met, then fine, because their onus is on the developer to make sure that all these conditions are followed and that we don't have down the track another DA which basically spells out other instances that need to be brought to council and, and then go through this process again.
Alderman James, other speakers? Write a reply. Motion then is the officer's recommendation for approval with conditions, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.2 is a development application at 18 St Helen Street, Lindisfarne for an outbuilding. Alderman Campbell? We have a second. Alderman Farland, thank you. Speakers? Alderman Farland, would you like to speak to the motion? Other speakers? I'll put the motion in, all those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Item 11.3.3, I've declared net list, I'll hand the chair to Deputy Mayor. Item 11.3.3, a rezoning amendment at 38 Gordon Hill Road, Lindisfarne. Alderman Kersick? Second, Alderman Chong. Alderman Kersick?
I'm asking to say, Mr Deputy Mayor, I support the council, council officer's recommendation that representations received do not warrant any modifications to the decision taken by the council at its meeting on the actual paper. And I seek justice.
Good recommendation.
Any further speakers? Alderman James?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Deputy Mayor. I support this recommendation and, and I think it's the next step in this very successful proposal that's been ticked off and has provided a lot of, I suppose, accommodation and interest in many rate payers throughout the city. The, the section I want to deal with here is the, the Department of State Growth, State Growth comments, which is very interesting because I have had reservations about the on-off ramps for some time. And, and I note here that DSG has said that the land or section of the land to be rezoned includes land previously identified as being required for the upgrading of Gordon Hill Road, et cetera. And the DSG advised that further work will be required to determine the terminal treatments of the ramp junctions. So look, I think this is going to accommodate both parties. You know my concerns about the off-ramps, I mean, on-ramp, that is that Gordon Hill Road, Tasman Highway change are there and, and I personally don't, I don't support that because I think it's going to create all sorts of problems with Gordon Hill Road, et cetera, et cetera. But nevertheless, this proposal needs to get a tick in the box, it needs to be supported. It's the grand, a grand plan of Southern Cross involved in the city and this is just going to complement the other fairway rise development. And so I will just wait and see what DSG has to do as far as getting their message across. I support the recommendation.
Any further speakers? If not, write a reply, Alderman Kersick. I put motion, all those in favour? I was against to declare the motion carried and the darts unanimous, yeah, the Mayor to be recalled, thanks. Um, there's nothing at 11.4, customer service, moving on to 11.5, asset management. 11.5.1 is the Clarence Street's, uh, street safety assessment project. Did you see which one was?
I wasn't looking.
Alderman James, was it? I'm sorry, Alderman James, I've been advised was first Alderman James?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, and I'd like to move Part A, Part B.
Is there a second there? Oh, there's a second?
I would pause for that round of time.
So seconded, Alderman Campbell. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The, the matter of the Clarence Street Safety Assessment Project has been ongoing and it has taken some time to get to the stage where council has been provided with a number of recommendations by the technical working group regarding the safety improvements for Clarence Street. Because Part A deals with the consistent spacing of bus stops and alignment with pedestrian movements, it also provides discrete turning lanes where possible at intersections along Clarence Street and rationalise the frequency and location of standouts and islands. The council authorises the General Manager to undertake consultation with the Belray Primary School and the Department of State Growth on the desirability and feasibility of traffic signalling at the Scott Street, Clarence Street intersection. The number of recommendations that have come forward address the key matters that have been discussed along with the cycle lanes and also the, a number of options that have been, been considered. There are questions in my mind about as to whether or not enough work has been done on a couple of these matters that pertain to cycle waves in this area. And therefore, at this stage, I believe it's important that we tick off on those recommendations from the technical working group that address those key matters such as the bus stops, the alignment with pedestrian movements, discrete turning lanes and so forth. Down the track, we can look at other issues, it doesn't mean that the matter is closed once and for all. And in fact, by taking on board these matters, we are doing as much as we can on the information that we have available to us to be able to at least tick off on 90% of those recommendations that need to be forward by the technical working group.
Alderman Campbell? Other speakers? Alderman Farland? I'm sorry, Alderman Farland, you were first.
I support this motion, Mr Mayor. This council has spent a large amount of money on this safety assessment. The basis for the safety assessment was just not for one set of road users, but all sets of road users, of which cyclists are a prominent feature on this road regardless of the count that's put forward in the assessment in time. I believe that the justification for just supporting A and B is based on a lack of progressive thinking and not looking at the future requirements of our community as it stands now and in the future. We've had a speaker here talk tonight about the increase of children riding bikes to school. Within that concept, that main high school has for a very long time been looking at cycling as a method for children to get to school and those children have come from Ropeby and Clarenbar. I think it is just ridiculous to not consider the whole of the options that were put forward to us and address them at this point in time whilst we are looking at restructuring the road. There is very little financial gain in not providing bike lanes. There is very little community progress in not supporting bike lanes. And I think there will be a large comeback at council at some time in the near future for not having a vision. People that these days do not just sit there and take it. When it comes to the type of needs that we want in our communities, health and, and safety are huge. Not everybody drives a car and they don't want to drive a car. We need to have communities that are looking at benefiting themselves in more ways than a bicycle doesn't just help people get healthy. For once, I would like to see this council choose to put a foot forward and take on the issues that this community are really interested in and not live 20 years in the past.
Alderman Von Berta, I think you were next?
Mayor, I'd like to refer the Alderman to the very last point of the officer's report, 9.3. It actually notes that Clarence Street is a major connector road to the suburbs of Belray and Howra and linking the southern suburbs with the CBD area onto the greater Hobart area. We've been through a very long process to actually look at the safety of Clarence Street for all of the users in relation to transport. And as the report actually shows, we've spent years and we've spent a lot of resources and we've had a lot of people put their time, effort and passion into looking at this situation. So looking at the safety of all road users. We've had a collaborative reference group of 14 people who've actually looked at this matter. And then we've had a technical working group who've also looked at this matter. And both of those groups have put forward recommendations. The technical working group has actually taken the collaborative reference group's work and looked it in, in detail. Parts A and B of the officer's recommendation actually cover certain aspects related to that. We've actually had two workshops recently where we've looked at the working group options and recommendations in detail. We've asked the officers for more information and we've got to the stage where we've actually got in relation to options. We've, we've got two options that are recommended to go out to public consultation. I actually believe that the credibility of this council is at stake if we do not actually go out to public consultation in relation to these two options. I asked for a rough costing in relation to these options and the first option is around 700,000. And the second option, which includes the bike lanes and the parking zones being marked out, is around about 760,000. That's doing, if you like, everything together. Yes, perhaps in stages, but together. That costing could be considerably more if, as Alderman James says, we look at bike lanes, et cetera, down the track to do the pump. So I think it's really important to keep in mind that the bike lanes, marking the bike lanes out and parking zones may cost us around about $60,000 as compared to A and B costing us 700,000 or thereabouts. So if it's cost that the Alderman are concerned about, then it's no great deal more. If it's about the principle of bike lanes, then that's another matter. But I think in terms of this particular recommendation from the officers, it's beholden on us after having spent so much time, so much effort, so much passion from members of the community who were chosen, that we actually allow these two options to go out to consultation. And I actually have an alternative motion if Alderman James's motion doesn't get us. It's a little bit different to the officer's recommendation in that Part D actually looks at this matter coming back to not only a council workshop but to the council meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berta. Are there any other speakers? Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In the past-
In the past few years and looking at the strategy going forward, this council has won a lot of praise in the community for the work that we've done on bike trails, trails generally, but specifically bike trails, helping people get where they want to go safely. It just seems to me that we are missing a great opportunity if we don't look at putting the possibility of putting bike trails on Clarence Street at this time. As has been mentioned, there are an increasing number of commuter cyclists, not something I would like to do, I'm a recreational cyclist, but a lot of people do want to do that. We've spent money on the bridge, making commuter cycling safer, not sure going over the bridge is necessarily safer, but we've made the pass up to there a lot safer for people. We've encouraged people to use their bikes to commute. So how can we then say it's inappropriate to not look at one of our main arterial roads and look at cycleways potential on there? I can't support this motion. I think it's important that we look at this and take it out to community consultation.
Alderman Chong, other speakers? Alderman Pearce.
I have certificates in advance in defensive driving and far as I can see, recommendations A and B are very much the safety aspect of Clarence Road and that I totally support. Now, the way I see this motion is that we do the safety aspects of this report first and when that's done, we come back and look at C and D. Far as I can see, the most I've ever seen, there just gone, we do the safety aspect first and that's what I totally agree with. Now, I can understand that people saying, oh, yes, let's do all this, but as I say, I'm safety first. I'd like to see the changes made and then have a look at it because I think then it would certainly fit in. We know ourselves that when we see those, what are they, refus in the middle of the road and you try to pass cyclists and you've got the refuge there, it's just so dangerous. So I believe we've got to go down the safety issue first, the safety issue first of recommendation A and B. And as I said, C and D are there, they're not lost and I'm sure the person that moved this recommendation has already stated that. So that's why I support A and B.
Alderman Farley.
I'm relatively new to the debate, but I'm yet to be convinced that we've had really technical advice to say that the bike lane can actually work on Clarence Street. I need to see a technical report that tells me how it's going to be done and how, as we saw in option three, whether that can actually work. I was researching this afternoon, my mind is open, but I did come across a report which said why bike lanes are a bad idea and there is several pages to say why they haven't worked. And it's a combination of having parking plus bikes and sort of trying to separate with limited space available. So I like the idea of A and B. I'm a bit worried that when we put out to the public consultation that it's going to get a skewed result. Already been contacted by bike committee people saying option three is the best option and I just think there could be a flood of that sort of attention. So, yeah, users, yes, a number of users. So I'm looking at whether for Clarence Street, I need to be convinced that bike lanes on Clarence Street can work and I'd be looking for a report which can tell me exactly that. I'm worried that a lot of money is spent on public consultation and then are we any still the wiser at that stage? So that's where I sit with this one.
Other speakers? Right, we're class. Alderman James.
Very briefly, Mr Mayor, on page eighty, the community technical group identified eight key landing points in their recommendation. And A and B is recommending ninety percent of those matters. On page ninety, with reference to the bike lanes and on-street parking, it says the technical working group were unable to obtain a unanimous decision on this item. I think the safety matters first and foremost in A and B will address ninety percent of those points that have been recommended by the technical committee, state council's support.
The recommendation before the chair is that we adopt items A and B. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Nothing under financial management, eleven point seven governance, eleven point seven point one. Alderman Chong, did you wish to prepare an interest? Alderman Campbell has moved the recommendation. Is there a second, please? Alderman Pearce, thank you. Speakers?
A lot of work being done in this.
Alderman Pearce. Put the motion and the recommendation that we approve the partnership grants, all those in favour? Against? Carried and could we recall Alderman Chong's case? No. Bottom eleven point seven point two is a council delegation under the Urban Drainage Act recommending approval.
Yes.
Alderman Walker, thank you, Alderman Kusick. Could I just say, and now that there's no one in the audience, sometimes it gets very confusing when people aren't standing up to move motions or speak.
Yes.
So a chair would be very grateful for that. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have speakers? Thank you.
It really does speak for itself. Drainage is a very, it is exciting. It's potential for me to get on the soapbox and say, when you have an organisation such as Taswater coming to B, it was meant to be an efficiency process, it was meant to be about bringing everything together and it actually created disruption in efficiency at putting things like stormwater separate from other hydrological management. But the world we live in, we can say, I'll back this motion.
Thank you. Second. Other speakers? Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Alderman's question time, no matters on notice, questions without notice. Deputy Mayor, Alderman Von Berta.
I believe that it's because of...
Free, Mr Mayor, I might ask Mr Graham if he can...
Mr Mayor, I will follow up with the department's paper growth, they certainly are behind.
They started the Alma Street today. It would be catastrophic after Christmas.
Alderman Pearce.
Similar vein, Mayor, I start to ask a few to Mr Graham. Coming down Rossney Hill, thanks to the traffic lights, is there going to be a left-hand turn into Eastlands area with the traffic is also going down?
Sorry, where from Alderman?
Coming down Rossney Hill, we used to be able to turn left into Eastlands, but at the moment, there's no arrow, it's on a green light you can turn, but before there used to be, well, there used to be a super lane. So what I'm saying is there's going to be an arrow because when the track is going to town...
Can you turn when it's red, otherwise?
Yes, well, there's a green arrow.
Okay.
Alderman Downs.
Mr Mayor, the Palmer Street is staying very good, I'm going to buy a pass through Cambridge. You want me to get up there again? From the roundabout or the crossover at...
Richmond Road?
Up.
Up through to Richmond Road.
Yes. I've got a letter today saying they're going to resume now and so I'm just wondering when they're going to start on this project.
Free, Mr Mayor, we've been given no indication of when they're going to start the project, but we were given an understanding that they were reviewing the priority of that project and that it was in the view of the DSG officers perhaps had a higher priority than what they'd recognised in the past, but we're not aware that they're doing that at this stage. We'll follow that up with them and give, provide council with a response through the briefing report.
Thank you. I guess just to follow up on Alderman's comment, where are we with the Cambridge Master Plan?
Sorry, Cambridge Master Plan?
Free, Mr Mayor, certainly I'm aware that a number of elements of it have been progressed where I think the sort of the hold-up point, I can at the moment, is in relation to the roundabout, the design work around the roundabout at Richmond Road stroke Cambridge Road. As soon as I think we've resolved that, we're in a position, I think, to come back to council with the final report for public exhibition, but we're just trying to resolve some issues around that first, I believe.
I have two questions. One's an easy one. Could we have some feedback fairly soon on where the CAT legislation implementation is going with the state government?
I understand that Mr Toohey might be able to give you an update as a result of the meeting today.
We are, time that well.
Free, Mr Mayor, the meeting today of the State CAT Records Group and the... There will be further workshops on that.
Thank you. Very timely question, Alderman Farner.
Thank you. The second one is an observation of children walking from the bus stop which is now placed on the side of the road opposite the Rokeby five station. In the past, there was one back at Tower Garden Centre and the guard rail goes back to the garden, to the garden centre and they're walking on the inside of the guard rail, which is good because there's safety. But there's very little room for them to walk because of the steepness of the...
So the question is?
They're walking regularly, there's been more than one. Could we look at... Well, I don't see how we ever stop kids walking like a crow flies because they'll just go the easiest route. They must live down the other end of the guardrail.
So could we have a safety...
No, just a little wider bit of gravel so they can walk safely because they can hardly put one foot up to the other. You're never going to stop them doing it unless they can walk down the embankment from the intersection onto the flat bit along the bottom, which is our road review. Just a suggestion because they're going to walk at, there's two boys...
I took the question and I think, Mr Graham, are you in a position to follow that up with Alderman Farner? Thank you.
I happened to have to drive to Crumore the other day to visit someone in Pipe Play Estana and there's a small section at the very entrance when you first come in, Pipe Play Estana, that's supposed to be a sealed path. I've never seen such a patchwork of road in all my life and apparently council were in the facility in a few days putting, patching potholes.
And the question?
The question is, based on the fact that it gives a very bad impression of council's work, is there anything in future budgets to actually give that a bit of a refill? It's just the entrance to Pipe Play Estana, the rest of it is gravel, but this particular section, if it's going to be maintained as a sealed piece, does it need workers there for three days patching potholes and making it look like an absolute...
Thank you. Mr Graham?
Free, Mr Mayor, I'm going to follow that one up. The Crumore Avenue is due to be resilled here.
Might be a little bit extra material that could be taken around there.
Thank you. If you could take that on board. Alderman Walker.
Yes, I'd like yourself, Mr Mayor, through you to the general manager. In 2013, when a process was looked out to go at consultation potentially on a merger with Sir Alan Clarence, council made a decision to let the matter rest on the table. The matter in hand was a two point eight percent identified efficiency with unidentified merger costs. Given the current climate, we are now looking at exploring things and I guess rules of engagement as far as benefits as outlined by the minister and also identified by council, why is it such artefacts remain in place and should they not be removed?
Well, I'll ask the general manager comment in a minute, but I would have thought that that particular one has had a long rest on the table and that it's been overtaken by events. And it was also on the previous council before the elections, so I imagine that it's expired.
General Manager?
Well, we'll clarify that later.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it expires per se, but it is quite, I mean, it has in effect been overtaken by events. I'm certainly not actively looking to act on it and bring it back to council, but if council so wished, it could be probably most expedient to dealt with by an ad hoc motion dealing with that particular issue, but it is still on the books technically.
The other way of dealing with it, GM, would be when we bring forward a recommendation and regard it... in regard to a Greater South Eastern Council, we could also have an element of that to take the previous one off the books.
It could be any one of those, Mr. Mayor. And then the second question on the same matter is, is there a readily obtainable list of all the other, if you like, artefacts or things that are laying on this table? That's not laying on the table, you killed it. You squashed it, Mr. Alderman.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I suppose, yeah, there probably aren't that many. I think we could probably construct it reasonably well. There is, we do have an action sheet that probably has a number of such items on it, but I'm not sure that there are any others that I can think of that are actually laying on the table in virtue afterwards. Also, the fact that we are a new council...
That only relates to rescinding of motions.
All right. I stand and chastise my driver. Alderman James, do you have any questions?
I have two. The first one is with regards to an email slash letter that we received from Richard Mulligan and his president of Clarence Football Club. And in that letter, Mr. Mayor, he reports to have not been advised of all of this restricted parking. I have a question. My question through you to the General Manager or the appropriate officer is that during that time that we went out to the public to canvass this issue of unrestricted, unrestricted parking and durwands and park, et cetera, was a letter sent to Mr. Mulligan?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, I don't believe we did correspond with Clarence Football Club in particular. We did certainly correspond with Cricket Tasmania, and Clarence Football Club are a subtenant of theirs. I have a meeting with, I'm not sure if it's with Mr. Mulligan or Mr. Byer, the president of the football club, sometime, I think, this week or early next week, to discuss the matters he's raised in his letter. I am keen to meet with them because I suspect that the matters they've raised in their letter relate to the earlier iteration or proposal by council rather than what council resolved at their most recent meeting. But nonetheless, I'm having a meeting with them to try and work through those issues, and I'll provide advice to council as I've had that meeting.
Second question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I refer to Ray Groom's letter to the General Manager of the 5th of October 2015. In that paragraph, he says that it's interesting, I'm quoting, it's interesting to note that a 2005 decision of the Western Australian Administrative Tribunal was based on similar facts to those applying to our village, he's talking about Fairway Rock, this case was United Church Homes Inc. and the city of Sterling.
That sounds like a long question.
No, I had to spell that out. He's saying in his letter, Ray Groom, the tribunal determined that the land in question was used exclusively for relief at the aged and therefore exclusively for charitable services. My question through you to the General Manager is, would this, in a scenario, provide the council with a little bit of manoeuvrability on the issue to provide either a part rebate, full rebate, on the question of the land as distinct from the dwellings which we have continued to spell out in correspondence to, namely, Ripton, out of this section? Is there, is it possible for us to provide a part or full rebate because of the land as distinct from the dwellings?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the first comment I'd make is that that Western Australian court case was referred specifically to our senior counsel for advice. His advice was that the legislation in Western Australia is slightly differently worded and that that decision had no applicability whatsoever in the case of the Tasmanian law. In regard to your second part of the question, in regard, does council have the capacity to provide a remission? Council under the Act does have the capacity to provide a range of remissions or rebates, and that is really subject to the council's determination at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Alderman James. That concludes the open session. Item 13, closed meetings. Alderman Pearce, thank you. Alderman Chong, second. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 13.1.